Good evening, everyone. Those rocky spaces.
Give me your agenda. Agenda is... Hold on, let me find it. I took it out. We misplaced our agendas. The agenda, yeah.
All right, this meeting is being held live. Adequate notice that this meeting hearing has been provided by publication in the Home New Shaboon. Can I ask everyone to rise for the pledge of allegiance? Pledge allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call.
Mr. Zangara?
Here.
Mr. Malanson?
Here.
Ms. Hutchinson?
Here.
Ms. Malbone?
Here.
Mr. Rubenstein?
Mr. Vigna?
Here.
Ms. Vito?
Mr. Brooks?
Here.
Ms. Decandia?
Here.
Great, just a general announcement, no new testimony will be heard after 10:00 PM. Everyone should have a copy of the October 14 minutes. If there's no questions on the minutes, a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Zangara?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Malanson?
Yes.
Ms. Hutchinson?
Yes.
Ms. Malbone?
Yes.
Mr. Vigna?
Yes.
Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Ms. Decandia?
Yes.
Great, thank you. We have one memorialization, it was the Main Street North Brunswick Phase 1H. That we're pushing to the next meeting, correct?
To December, yes.
So that actually will be pushed to the December meeting, just due to a conflict from the builder or the owner. So moving right along, we have one new application for this evening, K-LAN, number .454 LLC, Block 148, Lot 11, Lot 1, Lot 01, preliminary and final major subdivision for a Wawa with gas pumps and a Take 5 oil change retail business.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Brett Kaplan, K-A-P-L-A-N, for the applicant and property owner, K-LAN 54 LLC. It's nice to see everybody again tonight. We're here seeking preliminary and final site plan approval, major subdivision approval for a 6,300 plus or minus square foot Wawa with gas pumps, a 1,730 square foot Take 5 retail oil shop with associated site improvements, including off-street parking, signage, lighting, landscaping, stormwater improvements, et cetera. These two uses are permitted uses in the PUD 2 zone district. We are not requesting any variances tonight. We have a few witnesses. To my right is the project engineer, Mark Lescavage. We also have a Wawa operational witness, Mike Riddell. We have somebody here from Take 5 Oil that will review their operations and their architecture. That's Dez Roberts. And we also have Kerry Penkey, the project traffic engineer. I have provided the planning board secretary with our affidavit of service and publication. I believe everything's in order. I would request the board take jurisdiction of the matter, and we can begin with our case in chief.
Are we okay with notice and publication? Okay.
Great. Lescavage, would you, I guess, raise your right hand and be sworn in, please?
With regard to his application, do you swear the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth, so hope you got it?
I do.
Could you state your name and spell your last name for the record, please?
Mark Lescavage, spelled L-E-S-C-A-V-A-G-E.
Is it M-A-R-K or C?
K.
Thank you.
Mark, before you begin your testimony, would you provide the board with your education and professional qualifications, please?
Sure. I have a bachelor's in science and civil engineering from the New Jersey Institute of Technology in 1992. I have a master's in science and environmental management, also from NJIT in 1999. I've been practicing civil engineering for 30 years, concentrating mostly in land development. Thank you.
In your preparation for tonight, did you review the North Brunswick development ordinances and visit the property?
I have.
And you prepared or you oversaw the preparation of the plans that we'll be marking as exhibits and will be testifying to this evening?
Yes.
Great. I believe first, if you could please discuss the existing conditions of the property and the surrounding uses, please, Mark, for the board.
Yes, in doing this, I'll put up the first exhibit, A1.
So for the record, Mr. Chairman, this is a plan dated 11/14/25, project number 17001949C, identified. The title is Amaranth at North Brunswick Phase 3 and 4, existing conditions.
Do we already have this? Do the board members already have this?
I don't believe you have this plan as part of the application.
You do not.
So, Mr. Chairman, if you wouldn't mind, I'll mark A1 with today's exhibit. Yes. Thank you very much. So, Mark, with what we've marked as exhibit A1 with today's date, could you please review the property, the existing conditions, and the surrounding uses, please?
Yeah, and just to orient the board, the north arrow is to the right, so as I'm referring to the exhibit, and the scale on this exhibit is 1 inch equals 50 feet. And what you see here is the boundary of the entire Amaranth at North Brunswick project. What we're here tonight is actually reviewing only one of those lots. We took the liberty of actually putting in the subdivision lines on that lot as well. But as you could see, the site exists on the southwest corner of Route 130 and Renaissance Boulevard. To the west is Morris Drive. To the south is Renaissance Boulevard West. The site in question is Block 148.11, which is, basically, the lot as they exist are broken up into Lot 101, which is the northern part of the property, and the southern part of the property is Lot 102. The subject lot is Lot 101. That lot is 11.055 acres, and it's wholly in the PUD 2 zone within the township. In terms of the surrounding uses, first, I'll go what's on-site. You can see that the Lightbridge Academy and Walgreens make up the northern part of the site. You can also see on the, just south of the boundary line is Lot 102. That is the Amaranth Phase 1, the age-restricted development. And what you could see here, the subject lots, which will be Lot 104 and Lot 105, where the construction is going, there's also Lot 103, which is Amaranth Phase 2. That's the 90 age-restricted units that were approved in 2023. So, and just to orient the board a little bit more, as far as the off-site uses, the middle school is to the north or to the right of this page. The, to the west of Morris Drive is the Greens at Renaissance, multifamily development. And across the street at 130, you could see there's some farm fields. There is also the access to the Middlesex County Public Works facility along Apple Orchard Lane. So, that's pretty much the existing conditions.
Great, thank you, Mark. Next, why don't we walk the board through the proposed site plan? Describing what we're here to...
Can we corrupt the date? Today's the 13th, not the 14th.
I'm sorry?
Today's the 13th, not the 14th.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mark, this next exhibit is also not part of the application material.
No, it is not.
Sorry, can you hear that better? Mark, what we're going to mark is exhibit A2. This is not part of the application material which the board has in front of it, correct?
It is not, no.
So this we will mark as A2. It's a color rendering of the proposed site plan titled Amaranth at North Brunswick Phase 3 and 4 Site Plan Exhibit. It's dated 11/14, incorrectly, we will change that date to 11/13/25, with the same project number on it.
Okay, so what you see here is a color rendering of the site plan that was submitted. There's one enhanced feature on this, in that we're showing the Amaranth 2 project and how that fits together along Town Center Drive. What's being proposed, as you could see, south of the Walgreens is the Wawa convenience store with gas. This is a permitted use in the zone. The Wawa is 6,372 square feet, where we've placed it on the property approximately 152 feet off of Route 130.
Can I interrupt you for one second? I don't know if anybody else has this. I've got half the board cut off. Can you slide the board that way a little bit, so, you know?
Right, yeah, I agree.
Visibility, want the camera to be able to get it, but sitting up on the board here, yeah, that's perfect.
That better?
That's still on camera? I was told to put it there.
That's not, if it has to be tilted more that way, at least, you know, I was losing...
No problem.
At least a third of the board.
Is that better?
Thank you, sorry.
No, 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 that's quite right. I was told to put it there because of the television, but obviously you guys have to see it, so you're going to vote on it.
Sorry to break your train of thought.
No problem. So, going back to the Wawa, as I said, it's 6,372 square feet, approximately 152 feet off of Route 130. It has a maximum height of 26 feet 11 inches. There are two entrances to the building, on the east side and on the west side, or the front and rear of the building. There is also, on the south side, what we're calling a fly-through area, which is, this specific prototype has a pickup window. And we have a Wawa representative that'll go through more testimony on that, but from an engineering perspective, it's a one-way through here with a bypass lane along that location.
Excuse me, you said that's a pickup window?
A pickup window, yes.
It's a new prototype. We have somebody here can testify to it, but you can place an order on the app and pick it up at the window. We'll get into it with another witness.
Okay. Also proposed, also proposed for the Wawa, on the north side of the building is the loading zone, and that meets the ordinance requirements for the loading zone. As you can see, in the front of the building, adjacent to Route 130, is the gas canopy. That's a 29 by 158-foot A-frame gas canopy underneath, holding six multi-product fuel dispensers with 12 fueling locations. And you can see also, even closer to Route 130, is the fuel tanks, they're underground fuel tanks to supply the fuel to those dispensers. Also proposed, closer to Town Center Drive, is a trash enclosure for both recyclable and trash compaction. So that's it for the Wawa. Next, we'll go to the Take 5. The Take 5 is a 1,730-square-foot quick-glue building. It has three bays to do the oil changes. It complies completely with all the bulk zoning requirements. For such a building, it is a permitted use in the zone. It is approximately 73 feet off of Route 130. Its maximum height is 28 feet 6 3/8 inches. There is also a trash enclosure at the southwest end of the property to service the Take 5, but they have much less trash than the Wawa, and we do have an operations person for Take 5 that can speak to the adequacy of that area as well.
What about stormwater drainage and management of the stormwater for the property?
Yeah, I think I neglected to go into the parking on both the Wawa and the Take 5. Just real quickly, there is 46 spaces proposed for the Wawa, including four 12-by-40 large-size spaces for a larger vehicle or a vehicle that had a, would have a trailer with it, and that is more than compliant with the ordinance. And then, going back to the Take 5, there is also 20 total parking spaces proposed where 12 parking spaces are required, so both of those are meeting the ordinance. Now, since the Take 5 is less than 5,000 square feet, there's no loading zone required through the ordinance. Okay, in terms of stormwater management, there is two connected facilities proposed for Wawa and Take 5. Basin A, as you can see here on the southwest end, is a bioretention basin that provides both water quality and attenuation of the storms. There's, in the Wawa area, there's Basin B is a smaller bioretention basin. They're both connected. Also, in the Take 5 lot, there is Basin C, which is actually just a porous pavement area with stone. So these three connected go into the storm source system on Town Center Drive, and then further into the Walgreens basin. So, all of that acting together meets the stormwater rules, NJAC 7:8. In terms of, you want to go into signage?
That was my next question. You read my mind. Can you discuss the proposed signage for both the Wawa and the Take 5?
Yeah.
Proposed landscaping, and are there any emergency generators proposed for either use?
Okay, so, you can see we indicated on exhibit A2, there is a pylon sign proposed for Wawa and also for Take 5. Both of those proposed signs are off of the entrances onto Route 130. The Wawa sign is 20 feet tall. It does have a placard for the Lightbridge Academy as well. It sits on top of a 3 1/2-foot-tall stone base, and it, in total, is 61.45 square feet as per the calculation of area for zoning. The Take 5 sign, which you can see, is on the south side of the entrance to the Take 5 area. That sign is also 20 feet tall and is 50 square feet, pylon sign.
And, Mark, real fast, while you are discussing signage, sign details and pictures of the proposed signs were included as part of the application material, correct?
That's correct. They're on the construction detail sheet.
This is just a color rendering of what was already submitted as part of the application, correct?
Correct. This is actually sheet 10.05.
Looks like the Take 5 sign is only 5 feet from the property line of Route 130? Is that, am I reading that right? Off the dimension plan, entry point on one, pylon sign, looks like it's 5 feet off Route 130 property line?
That's what it says.
What is the setback for...
That's correct. 5 feet is correct, and that's the required setback.
The required setback for freestanding sign is only 5 feet?
Correct. If you look at that, the property line is also further off the road, so...
I don't understand what you mean by that.
Meaning that from the road to the sign is probably 30 feet.
The property line is...
Yes, I see, I see, yeah, the actual pavement is farther away from the property.
Correct.
I'm just surprised that the setback for freestanding pylon sign is only 5 feet. Okay, good.
Mark, would you address the proposed landscaping?
Yeah, so for the site, we feel we've prepared a generously landscaped plan that includes both evergreen and deciduous trees and shrubs to provide visual focal points throughout all four seasons, just an inventory of what's proposed. We have 56 deciduous and ornamental trees, 29 evergreen trees, 184 evergreen shrubs, 935 ground covers, and 96 grasses. So it'll be generously landscaped, and that's including the bioretention basins, which are also both landscaped. In terms of lighting, we've prepared a lighting plan that meets the ordinance as far as illumination, with both a series of pole-mounted and building-mounted fixtures. The pole mounts are 20 feet tall, and as I said, the lighting levels completely meet the ordinance requirements.
Excuse me, do you, um, do you have the full-size black-and-white prints available? When you're talking about the landscaping, you know, nobody watching, you get a feel for where that is, I mean, it's hard to tell on that. If you have the, you know, the black-and-white, normal... If you have the, you know, the black-and-white, normal, you know, large print, you just show where the...
Yeah, we do have.
Show where the landscaping is?
Sure.
Right? It's hard to, you can't follow it because of the... Yeah, see, if you could just go over, you know, where you've got, I'm not asking you to go over all the details, what you've landscaped, where it is, what works in the site, because this home's on the other side.
Yeah, so going back to now referring to Sheet 8, which is the landscape plan that was submitted as part of the application. What you see going from, I guess that would be west to east, you could see that there was a landscape package with both street trees and shrubs along the Route 130 area where the tanks and the parking is for the Wawa in that island as much as we could. There are also some street trees along there. There is a driveway there, so we couldn't put a certain amount of landscaping in this location because of the site triangle. And then moving along the Take Five, the same thing. We have street trees along Route 130, and you could see in the basin, there's a generous amount of landscaping proposed for bioretention. We've also tried to landscape the islands as much as possible, as you could see with both trees and shrubs and grasses and ground covers. Wawa itself does not put foundation plantings to keep things streamlined from getting the parking areas into Wawa, but we did landscape the islands within the Wawa area as well. I don't know if you have any other specific questions. The trash enclosures also have a screening around three sides of them.
And you'd mentioned the second detention basin or retention basin on Take Five? I only see two basins. Where's the second one on Take Five? Did you say there were two basins?
At this location here, which is pretty much...
I see that basin on the plans, right? And then I see the one in the left corner.
Then there's one that's kind of like an L that goes around the Take Five.
Oh, okay.
On the south and west side.
I didn't realize that was a separate basin. Okay. Because I heard you talking about impervious, you know...
There's another area where the 20 parking spots are for Take Five that is a porous pavement basin.
It'll be underground?
So it's underground. It's porous pavement.
Oh, so it's an underground basin?
Correct.
Okay, and you've also got, it's porous blacktop pavement?
Yes, you can't, more or less, you can't tell the difference from regular asphalt.
It's not like, I've seen some big checks where they've got, looks like cinder blocks turned sideways when you're driving, okay?
No, nothing like that. This is actual ash fault, porous ash fault.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
And then, Mark, if you could just please touch on, there's more landscaping along the backside, along Town Center Drive, and then there's landscaping within the bioretention basins as well, I believe.
Yeah, I think I indicated that when I was talking about the south side of Take Five. This is all where the bioretention basin is. You can see that's generally generously landscaped through that area.
Any other questions relative to the landscaping?
Any questions for the board?
Mark, there was a few questions I just want to highlight from, before we get into the CME November 4, 2025 report. There are no emergency generators proposed as part of either the Wawa or the Take Five, correct?
Greg, can you talk into the microphone?
There are no emergency generators proposed as part of the Wawa or the Take Five, correct?
That's correct.
And you addressed parking earlier. Can you address the make-ready EV spots that will be provided?
Yes, there's one make-ready EV spot for both the Wawa and for Take Five. Let's see where we can... General, this is probably not a good spot. Okay, there's one in the, at this location, which is the easternmost part of the Take Five basin. That's a make-ready space. And then there's also one near 130 on the north side of this parking area for Wawa.
And when I say make-ready, can you explain what that means to the board?
Yes, so as far as the state statute goes, you're required to have a certain number of make-ready spaces, and make-ready means that the conduit for powering up the electrical vehicle would be required to be installed, but not the actual chargers themselves that would, at a certain point, would come out at a later date. But it's not required as far as getting a CO. You're required to have the infrastructure, if you will, for the charger in place.
So just so we're clear, the construction of the conduit underground and the wiring will be done as part of the construction, but they might not be operational at the time of CO. They will come online at some point thereafter.
That's correct.
How long thereafter?
Both Wawa and Take Five don't provide charging stations themselves. They're contracted out to third parties, so that's going to be an ongoing negotiation, and it'll be provided at a later date at this point.
I mean, a later date, could that be five years from now or...
It could be pursuant to the statute based on the number of parking spaces provided here at the Wawa and the Take Five. They only have to be made ready.
I understand that, but I believe the board would like them to be made ready when the stores are open. Maybe we could pass that along.
Okay, well, we'll have the operations. We can certainly get to that at a later point in the meeting. Mark, have you had an opportunity to review the March, excuse me, the November 4, 2025 report from Mr. Watson, the Township Planning Board Engineers from CME?
Yes, I have, and I had the opportunity also to talk to Mr. Watson about the comments in the letter.
Are there any comments in there to the extent applicable to our application that you cannot comply with?
No, I feel we can comply with the report as applicable.
And also, could you briefly touch on the status of the outside agency approvals that are relevant to this development? Middlesex County Planning Board, Freehold Soil, DOT, et cetera?
Sure. So Middlesex County, we do have our approval for both the Wawa and the Take Five. We've received comments from the Freehold Soil Conservation District, very minor comments that we'll take care of when we resubmit, should we gain approval from the board. And I believe, and this may be better suited to the traffic engineer, but I believe we have a pending NJDOT application as well.
What about a Treatment Works approval and/or a DEP water permit? Are either of those approvals necessary for either the Take Five or the Wawa proposed use?
No, the Bureau of Safe Drinking Water Permit is not required because the project is within the master permit of Veolia. And the Treatment Works approval would not be required because it is two buildings with single connections to an existing system and less than the 8,000-gallon-per-day threshold. Should add that.
Mr. Chairman, I have no further questions of the engineer.
Mr. Watson, do you have any follow-up or any testimony you want to get on the record?
I mean, I think they've agreed to satisfy all the comments in the memo, and we discussed it prior to the meeting, so...
You're satisfied?
Yeah, satisfied.
I'm sorry, can you just show where the four oversized parking spaces are?
Absolutely.
Maybe on the black-and-white plan? It's just hard, it's hard to make anything out on that plan.
Right at the...
It looks like I'm looking like at a forest.
No, this is where there's a line here. There are the, these four spaces on the northern part of the parking, which is on the south side of the Wawa. That's where the spaces are. So the...
You're looking at a forest.
Right here, 1, 2, 3, 4, those four.
So where are they? Mark, if you wouldn't mind, so you can, your testimony is clear, utilizing A2, can you please describe where the four oversized spots are located?
So the four oversized spots are on the middle island on the Wawa tract. It is the four northernmost spots, and they are the size of the regular parking spaces that are also in that area, but they go all the way across. So that's why there's four of them to essentially, you know, for every two of these.
When you get back from that, it looks like you're just looking at a big forest or something. You can't even tell those lines on the plan.
And those four oversized spots will be utilized by a landscaper with a bigger, you know, truck with maybe, you know...
Correct. Either a trailer or just a larger truck could fit in that spot. It's actually wider than the normal spots. It's 12 feet wide and 40 feet long, so it's plenty wide for almost any truck that would be coming in.
Any questions from the board?
Just for the accessible, you've covered all of that. Is it just two spaces? That's all that's needed in this? Just curious.
For the handicap spaces?
Handicap spaces, yeah.
Yes.
And then there's one for Take Five.
Correct.
I think that there would be more.
I, I'm sorry, one more question on those four oversized spaces, because the ones on Livingston Avenue, they're towards the back of the lot. I've been there many times. There've been three trucks there. We see the quick check on how lane, there's trucks in the back, they get used. How do you sign these when they're sort of right in the middle of the other parking areas? Where does the sign go that directs people to let people know that those are oversized spaces?
I think that's a good question. I think Jim, Mr. Watson and I could work out how that's done. It may not be a sign, it may be a marking on the ground, just oversized parking or...
Behind the spots, you can have a sign that says oversized. I think that's what Quick Check has.
Okay, we can, we'll do whatever, you know, Mr. Watson finds reasonable, but that's a fair recommendation. We can comply.
Yeah, it just so happens that these spaces are right in between, right? Correct me, they're right in between parking aisles, so it's not like it's up to a curb which where the Wawa, the quick check on Route 1, there's a sign right behind them, right behind a curb that says, you know, oversized.
Yeah, I think the markings would be better in this case, based on what you're indicating.
I agree. I think we can work on that, work on a way to mark that. And also, I think, just to clarify some of the testimony, I think there's two accessible spaces for Wawa and one for the Take Five.
Yeah, that's...
I thought that's what he...
I think this is...
I thought it was more.
Ms. Hutchinson stated that, and I agreed with her.
I thought I heard one and one, okay.
She nailed it.
Just so the record's clear, it's two?
It's two for the Wawa handicap spaces, and there's one for the Take Five.
I have another question. So on this side, the basin, I think it's Basin A, the biodetention, you have a fence that goes along, can you explain what type of fence that is?
It's a four-foot-high black vinyl fence, and that's for fall protection along that area because there is a retaining wall there.
Okay. And are there any sidewalks? Like, you have an adjacent community next...
So we concentrated the sidewalks along Town Center Drive, and there is also a sidewalk coming in to where the Take Five is.
Okay. And does that sidewalk, oh, it goes all the way. It's kind of hard to see on these plans.
Mark, would you describe where the sidewalk is along Town Center Drive?
The sidewalk wraps around the bioretention basin there, and the sidewalk, you could see on both sides of Town Center Drive being proposed.
Okay, all right.
Next witness?
Good evening.
Mr. Redell, would you please state your full name and spell your last name for the board, please?
My name is Michael Redell, R-E-D-E-L.
Compared to this application, raise your hand. Compared to this application, you swear the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth.
I do.
And you've already stated your name, is it R-E-N-D-E-L?
No, R-E-D-E-L.
And your first name is Michael?
Correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Redell, would you please provide the board with a bit of your background and experience with Wawa?
Certainly. I am employed by Wawa 27 and 1/2 years now. I am a real estate project engineer responsible for shepherding through approvals for new stores. My territory is the state of New Jersey currently. I was, had the same position for our store on Route 27 and Cousins, our store on Livingston Avenue, so both the other stores in North Brunswick, I was in front of the board as well.
We consider you an expert witness. Thank you.
Would you review briefly for the board Wawa's development history in New Jersey, specifically in Middlesex County?
Certainly. So Middlesex County and, you know, and north, so the northern counties, we've really been trying to focus to expand our development for as long as I've been at Wawa. In North Brunswick specifically, we've, we're very excited, have been literally trying to get on the Route 130 corridor and serve this part of the township for 15-plus years. So this is, we're very excited about this.
How will this Wawa be staffed and managed, please?
So if you're familiar with the other stores, this will be very similar. So if you're not, I'll just tell you. So we'll have about 45 employees.
How many employees?
Roughly 30 to 35 will be part-time, and 10 to 15 will be full-time employees. We have five different types of deliveries. The store will be delivered to very similar to the others. So we have our own dairy, so Wawa-branded juices, a milk, ice cream, all that we deliver. That'll be about three times a week. We have McLean deliveries, which is a lot of the provisioning items. That's also three times a week. Fuel, of course. We expect to have deliveries approximately once per day. Fuel, of course, we expect to have deliveries approximately once per day. We also have Fresh Channel, what we call Fresh Channel, which is all of our baked products, donuts, pretzels, breads, that's delivered fresh every day. And then vendor deliveries is the fifth type, so.
What was the last one?
Vendor. So chips, sodas, tasty cake, you know, a lot of that, the items on the shelves and in the beverage, coolers. And those come periodically on the, on whatever route those, those vendors deliver on.
And how does the delivery, how does that work? A truck will come onto site and they'll unload it through the door, the loading bay, the loading area?
Depends, not the fuel.
Good answer.
So, so the, the McLean and the Fresh Channel and the dairy, they'll all deliver to the loading zone through the, the main delivery door and on the side, and the vendor deliveries usually come through the front of the store. Usually it's a hand truck, they may park, typically they're step vans, so they may just take a parking space and come in. Some of the larger ones, they will park in the loading zone and, but they'll still typically come in through the front.
How will the, the gas pumps, how will they be staffed?
So, everybody here knows that New Jersey's a full-service state, and we have associates who pump gas at our stores, and they will be staffed, at least two, up to four, fuel attendants will be out there at all times pumping gas for our customers.
And this will be a 24?
Yes.
Hour use?
Yeah, of course, so we're 24/7 at almost all of our location, 1,200 locations, and we'll be 24 hours here as well, 365 days a year.
How will the staff handle refuse disposal and recyclables?
So we have, we have a dumpster area as outlined by the engineer, that'll be enclosed in, within the dumpster, the trash enclosure, there will be a trash and a recycling dumpsters, those will be, that's contained, so you can't see those from the outside. And those are typically three times a week each for pickup, and that again will be in a route, so maybe the same trash truck that comes to the Walgreens may come to the Wawa at the same time.
There were some questions earlier and some puzzled looks on the, the planning board members' faces about the drive-through window, I believe it's called the, the fly-through window. Would you explain what that is, how it will be utilized by customers of Wawa, how it will be staffed, et cetera? I think it's a new concept for, for New Jersey.
Yeah, it is, it's new, it's a new concept for Wawa, born out of the pandemic, I think, so it's, it's not drive-through, it's mobile order pickup. So you, in order to utilize the service, you need to order from the mobile app and drive up and to the window, and I know it's, I know this is hard to see, but it is, the window is on the, the south side of the building, it's one-way circulation around, just as if it were a drive-through window, it's just, it's a pickup window on the side. If we look, did you introduce us?
Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the board, so this is a color copy of the architectural rendering that was submitted as part of the application. So, I don't think it needs to be marked as an exhibit, but at your preference, I'll, I'll do either.
It's colored, we don't have that in our package.
I think we have the colored.
Oh, did you have, oh, did you have the color? Okay.
Okay, do we have the floor plan as well?
Yes, yes.
Do you have that? We don't need to mark it if we have it.
Okay.
Materials tonight.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. I can go into more detail about this building, kind of ruining the surprise, putting it up here now, but the, the window is right on the side of the building, roughly in the So the customers would order typically long before they get to the site, and once, once they enter, they'll, they'll go to the window and we'll open the window, we're staffed to, to get out there immediately. There are alarms that notify our associates that someone's pulling up to the window, they'll just say their name, and the order is typically ready and is just handed out the window. I think I heard a reference to, to lazy people. There are lazy people, and sometimes I'm a lazy person, but also you can think of someone maybe is on the phone, they don't want to hang up from a call, or they've got a family in the car and they, they don't want to get little kids out and, and in, so, and then we also service delivery services, DoorDash, Uber Eats, they all will do their pickups through that as well, so they won't have to park and go in the store and come back out.
Mike, if you wouldn't mind putting the, the architectural rendering back up, if you could describe to the board sort of the architectural features of the proposed building, colors, materials, et cetera?
Certainly, so jokingly, I referred to the surprise, so if you're familiar with our other two Wawas in North Brunswick, this one is different. So this, this store represents an evolution of our offer. Fly-through was one evolution, and then the building itself has different architecture. This is our store of the future. It's also a little bigger, it's 6,300 square feet. Our store in Cousins, 27 in Cousins is, I believe, about 4,500 square feet. Livingston is in between the two, around 5,000 or so. So this, this allows us, this extra space allows us to expand some of the back area for food preparation and make that more efficient. And also, and I, I'm sure you can't see this, but I'll just outline with my finger the customer access area that has the registers, all the shelving, the, all the, the coolers for grabbing drinks, as well as coffee, and then the order stations for ordering food, and then checkout with a, an area of self-checkout as well.
I'm sorry, can I ask a question pertaining to the deliveries?
Certainly.
So, obviously, there are going to be five different, five different types of deliveries happening, happening throughout the day. Just a block south of Walgreens, we have a middle school. My concern is with these deliveries and school buses coming in and out, whether it's morning or afternoon pickup and drop-off, traffic is going to be a nightmare. Any idea with regards to the time, and I know it's hard to pinpoint, but any idea with regards to the time of these various deliveries?
Yes, certainly, so, you know, we direct, we can control our own dairy, McLean schedules, and, and Fresh Channel, and those all come in the evening. So those, those will not be a conflict at all. Fuel deliveries are on-demand, so as the, the tank volume gets reduced, as we hope, a, a new truck is dispatched. We try to get those so they don't arrive during Wawa peak times, so, I think it's six to eight in the morning, 11:30 to one for lunch, and then four to six in the evening.
Those gas deliveries can be four or five times per day, correct?
No, no, gas delivery is going to be once per day.
Once a week? Every day, one? Every day? One delivery every day?
For, yes.
Okay.
You got it.
Yeah, thank you.
And that's approximate, so it may be that diesel is running low the same day, the regular's running low, so like, two may come one day, but then they won't come for a couple days, so.
I'm sorry, you said dairy and what else comes at night?
McLean, dairy, McLean, which is, McLean was the second delivery I mentioned, so that's.
McLean?
McLean.
Yeah, what is that?
Yes.
What is that?
It's, it's provisioning items for the store, so some pre-made salads, sandwiches, it, it's really a whole host of, you know, back of the shop items, packaging.
Your pinwheels?
Yes.
Little pinwheels?
Well, those may be vendors.
Okay, I'm too, I go there too often, so.
Can you give an example for the board of what a provisional is? What are some of the things that the McLean delivers?
Yeah, so trash bags and containers that, that we put food in, and, you know, just everything that you need to supply a store. You can think of the wrap that we wrap our hoagies in, just all of those types of things.
So that's the company that delivers it? That's why you call it McLean?
Yes, yes.
I was trying to figure out what kind of products McLean was. I'm racking my head, I've eaten everything in Wawa, but I don't know, I don't know what McLean is.
McLean is a.
I haven't eaten a McLean yet.
McLean is a, a trucking and distributing company, so they're, they're a company that we're contracted with to just do deliveries for us for those types of items. And if, now that you've, we've talked about it, if you're on, on the turnpike, you, you'll probably notice a McLean truck, because it's not just Wawa, they, they, they're a big company. So I wanted to talk a little bit more about this building that I was getting into, so asked about some of the materials, excuse me. This, this brown area is like a hardy plank siding, composite material. The, this speckled material, it's, it doesn't show up at any kind of distance, but that's brick. And then ephes or stucco is, is the, basically the backdrop of our signage, and then along the parapet on the top. It's just some Wawa features besides the obvious Wawa sign and our goose logo. We have this new V-shaped arch, which is, our architect tells me it's, it's the, it's to represent the V formation of a flock of geese. And then this red band is a signature of Wawas as well, something that we've carried through from our past. Otherwise, I mean, it's self-explanatory, we do have these, I'm not sure how the town defines them, they could be called signs, they're not branded, they're basically artistic murals or representations, like there's a, a coffee cup, this one says, build your order, this is a, a bit of a sandwich, same in the back, the sandwich, the coffee, I'm sorry, this is the side. On the other side, the same signs, and then a, a large welcome at the back door. Mark did mention we have two customer entrances, this is the front of the store, and this is the rear with the customer entrance. We have a customer entrance on, at our store in Livingston, similar setup. This is an ice chest, but that's kept locked, that's overflow ice, that when we run out in the store, one of our employees will go out, get a, a bunch of it and restock. And this is a kiosk for propane, you may have seen that at Wawa and other Home Depot, I think Hasn's, Lowe's, they, where you can exchange your propane for your barbecue.
Excuse me, are there other Wawas in New Jersey that have propane?
These kiosks are.
I've never seen propane.
Livingston Avenue.
Livingston Avenue's got it?
They're everywhere.
Oh, wow.
Every time you walk by the machine.
I don't think we, yeah, I don't think we opened with it, but everywhere we didn't open, we've gone back and added it. So I, I believe there was a question about EV that I wanted to address, so the, we talked about the state statute, which requires that a retail business of this size provide and make ready spaces. I understand that that's not the same as having EV charging. Right now, Wawa's not in the EV business, so we don't have like, the infrastructure to provide EV at our stores. What we do do at every case, and we'll do it here, we have EV partners, Wawa is the largest provider of Tesla charging stations in the country, even though we are only in a small part of the country. We work with Iona and Electrify America and some others, and we'll offer this site to them, and if they, if they want to join us and open EV, then we'll encourage them to have that infrastructure all in place before we open. If not, I think as Mark indicated, we'll, we'll, we'll be ready for it. So we're going to run the conduit, and we'll have this space designated on the approved plans of where the EV will be, and as soon as we can get someone on board, we will.
Have negotiations already started for that, or is that something, is that something after?
So Tesla for sure won't even look at it until we're at least, well, we're within a year of opening. Because they are, they are working on a, a whole network, and they, they don't plan that far ahead, so, so it won't be until closer to, within a year of opening.
With the, with your other store off of Route 1, when did that one, I know there's one there, but from when the store was built to when that was put in place and brought online, what was the, you know, approximate timeline?
I'm sorry, I, I don't know, I don't run the EV program. I wish, I can find out though, and we can get it back to you.
Okay.
It's, it's really site-dependent, so it, it depends on, they'll analyze, not only is this an appropriate location from a traffic, and, you know, they'll, they have their own analysis to know how many EV drivers there are in this, on Route 130, how many EV owners there are in the residents that live nearby, and do they have adequate EV charging in the vicinity? And if the answers are yes, yes, and no, then they'll want to get on board.
If they want to expand.
Correct.
Tesla's not going to provide two chargers.
No, so we, well, they, we would actually provide up to, so now they demand, they demand 12 spaces. They're not exclusive, so the chargers are there for all 12, but they want two that are exclusive, and then the, the other 10 are, can be used by any, anyone. So they, none of the providers that I mentioned do less than four, most are six to eight, and then Tesla's 12.
So you're saying Tesla now is demanding that you give them 12 spaces?
Yes.
Because I'm really familiar with the one on Route 18 southbound, where the whole side of the, the whole, and you know that site well, right? The one on Route 18 southbound in Old Bridge, I think it is?
Yeah.
By Route 9?
No, on Route, on Route 18.
Close to.
Yeah, yeah, and I mean, the whole side of that is Tesla, so I'm assuming, Jim, I think you said they had more spaces right around the Wawa than they needed, I'm assuming you're anticipating that, that Tesla's going to grab 12 spaces. It's, it's, you're on Route 130, it's a busy site, they're looking for those type of things, so you're in, you're thinking there's a good chance they'll take 12 of those spaces, right?
I, I am.
Yeah.
I am, I, I don't know, I can't make that promise, but I.
So you haven't laid this out in a way where you have, you have 12 spaces in an area that you think Wawa, that you think Tesla would, would take?
Correct.
Okay, also that, you know, that, and again, this has nothing to do with how I'd vote on this application, but being all too familiar with your sites, the, the site on, on Route 18, on dozens of occasions over the years, I've seen seven or eight parking spaces blocked off with cones, and the trucks pull up and deliver, they don't, there's a loading, there's a loading area there, and they load on the side of the, of the Wawa. of the, of the Wawa and block off a bunch of spaces. Is that because there's two trucks coming at one time or just because it's more convenient to unload there? You know that, that site or on the side of the building facing the gas stations?
Yeah, I don't know the condition specifically, but it's probably either one of those cases where, for whatever reason, based on the truck and when they come in, it may be more convenient for them to, to deliver in that fashion. Or there may be another truck when they get there. That's probably rare because we do control McLean Dairy and Fresh Channel, like I said. But they might pull in and there's like a vendor Pepsi truck.
But it's usually, like you said, they come at night, it's, it's in, it's always in the evening, I've never seen a second truck there. I'm, I'm just wondering how you direct your people, because you've got a loading area here, but then you have, you know, if they're not going to use that loading area, if they're going to take up, if they're going to block off the, the six or seven spaces on the other side of Wawa, I mean, you know, we'd, we'd be expecting them to load and unload in the loading area, because that's not what I see on Route 18. I see a truck in the loading area sometimes, but at night, it's always along the side, six or seven, eight spaces coned off and they come in for delivery.
And so in that, that case, it's probably easier for them doing that. In this case, that it's not likely. So when they deliver to the store, it's either on the passenger side door or from the rear. So I would expect they're going to come in through the back and go right along here, which, which is the easiest way. And the loading door is in this back corner, so there really isn't another good way. I mean, the, the loading zone in this case is so convenient for the circulation that they wouldn't have any reason to park anywhere else.
And assuming, for the sake of argument and addressing Tom's question, that you have problems with certain delivery drivers or certain deliveries being made and blocking spots, your management or the store could take care of that, direct deliveries to use the loading area or be dealt with accordingly?
Yes, and I would encourage, if there is ever an issue, to address it with the store manager, and they will 90% of the time take care of it if they can and address that concern. We also have a help desk that anyone can call to, if they have a complaint that the store's not giving you a satisfactory answer.
I just have, can you point out how, when they're delivering the fuel, where is that, where, where does that truck come in and-
Certainly. I don't, usually the engineer would speak to the truck circulation, however, the tanks are right here and the-
Generally, generally as a fact witness, if you could address Ms. Hutchinson's question, that'd be fine. If we have to get into the truck circulation plan, the traffic engineer will come up after.
Yeah, it's right here, so the, the truck will pull over, they'll cone off and then drop the, the hose down, connect it, and it's gravity, so it's not, it's, it's quiet. There's no, no pumps or anything, it's just gravity falling. There's another hose that goes from the, the tank back into the truck that, that captures the gases that are displaced, you know, as the, the tank is filled with fuel, those gases go back into the truck.
So I just have a question about this fly-through lane, and have you used this in any other locations?
Yes, so the first two I was involved with, we had originally decided to try drive-through. We opened a standalone drive-through store, turns out it wasn't successful and we've closed that. And then we had two stores that we, that were basically like this, except we, we added drive-throughs. So on this side, we, this is very broad brush, but we, you know, we did a typical drive-through and had circulation for, well, anyway, it didn't work. We decided to abandon the whole idea of drive-through. And so we converted those two drive-throughs into fly-through. And so one's in Langhorne, Pennsylvania, one's in West Hampton, New Jersey, right off of 295. And then we just opened a third one, which was the existing store in Woodbridge on Route 9 and King George Post Road, very busy spot, there's an Audi behind it, if you're familiar with that one. We added fly-through there and I just asked how it was going the other day and it was , it's working great.
So the intent of the lane adjacent to the fly-through is to be a bypass lane, correct?
Correct.
And has there been any issues with people trying to park there or deliveries there? Do we need to have any, no parking signage or have you had that issue at the other locations?
So the other locations are different in that we don't have the bypass lane, so we haven't come up against that issue yet. It's, I think if it's a problem, if it becomes a problem, we should address it. I mean, we don't want anyone parking there, I don't think anyone will, but you never know. We have plenty of stacking, you know, we have enough, we've, we've proved out that the, the pickup time is, is so fast that we, we never have more than two and three cars at most, and that is actually pretty rare. Our, our employees are directed that if we have more than three, that we move this first person along. That situation could happen, say a truckload or not a truck, say a van of soccer players is on the way home from a game and they're getting gas and then they all order a smoothie for the trip. Well, we can't crank out six smoothies in, in three minutes by the time they get around there. So in that case, we would, we would ask them to pull around into a space and then we would, and then come into the store. We ask them to, we don't bring the product out, we ask them to pull over and then come in the store and pick it up.
So as you, as you, as you pick up on that, that window and then you go forward, Jim, as, as it's going forward towards a corner of the store, most of your parking spaces, you know, are, are on that side. And I see you have a, you have a small four-foot sidewalk leading, leading, leading up to that driveway, Jim, where you're pulling out. So I'm assuming there'd be a stop sign or something there after they pick up, that they wouldn't just be able to drive right through, because everybody from all those parking spaces is, is being directed to that sidewalk to walk right across there, right?
So I, I think that's a, that's a great point and that was a miss on these plans. There should be a stop bar right here as well. There's a stop bar before the, the driver gets out into circulation on the site, but there should be another stop bar and a stop sign right here.
By the, by the sidewalk? Because that's where you're encouraging everybody to walk, right?
Yes, exactly right. And I promise you, we would have picked that up before we opened, but thank you for pointing it out.
And I, one of our comments is asking to mark that crosswalk across the aisle as well.
Yes.
Yes, you'll agree to, to mark the ad.
Yes, that was one of the comments. And yes, we'll do it.
So the, the, the four oversized parking spaces, you know, appeared on revised plans after we had initial plans, I had a conversation with Kaplan Attorney, Mr. Kaplan about that. And at the time, I'd, I'd said, you know, oversized things like for, you know, you got junk in the Big Verizon things and whatnot, and also I said tractor-trailers. And Brett, I think you got back to me and said that Wawa doesn't allow tractor-trailers on their site. And again, the, the, the two Wawas I'm all too familiar with are the one on, on, on Route 34 northbound, that's got a ton of spaces for tractor-trailers in the back and you could find, you know, six or eight there at a time. And then the one on Route 18 where all tractor-trailers, I've seen as many as four tractor-trailers around, wrapped around the gas pumps, and they go in to get sandwiches, because truck drivers love your turkey gobler as much as I do. And before I forget, the most important question tonight is, when does turkey gobler run from? What, what time of year, what time of year does Wawa offer?
It's going to be in the resolution, so you gotta make sure you get the state.
What time of year is that?
It's going to be a condition.
You're being recorded.
No comment. To, so to address your first question, that's why I'm here, because not everyone can speak for me. So our different sites are different, so, you know, to some we do accommodate tractor-trailer parking. Our site in Florence, right off the turnpike in, just when you come over the bridge from Pennsylvania, we built a, we got four acres and built a, a truck parking lot behind it because it was such an issue. What we find is that the truck drivers typically will go to the Wawas where they can easily get in and out and have room to park. I don't think that's the case here. We do have ways of discouraging it, so if it's an issue or, you know, if it's, if it's an issue for the board, we can talk about how, how we might do that. But we definitely aren't looking for tractor-trailers as customers at this site.
So you could post a sign by the entrance that would say, "No tractor-trailer parking"?
Yes, absolutely.
Because otherwise, the site looks like it functions fine for cars, but it doesn't, it looks like tractor-trailers would cause a problem.
Yeah, I mean, our drive-ais are generous, so, you know, someone pulling in with a boat or, you know, some other trailer with some ATVs, landscaper, you know, as Mark had mentioned, so.
Those are fine.
Yeah.
Any further questions for Mr. Riddell?
Any more questions? Next witness.
Could I ask? I'd like to ask Mr. Riddell one, one, Mr. Riddell, one other question before you leave. You went into detail, asked the exterior of the building and the materials and colors. In the event the board approves this, I would plan to have a condition that when the building is finished, it's going to look like what you've described, in terms of everything, colors, materials, signage.
I agree 100% and-
Just an example?
No, this is, it's a very, it's not photorealistic, but it is very accurate. We opened, the first one of these in, in New Jersey was opened in Pennsville, way down by the Delaware Memorial Bridge, three months ago. Looks beautiful, it looks just like that, it looks better than that. And your building department will have an opportunity to review the plans compared to what was approved.
Is the signage on Wawa backlit or it's LED?
It's internally lit.
Internally lit, okay, thank you.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board, thank you all for letting us be here tonight.
If you could raise your right hand, please, sir. With regard to this application, do you swear the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth?
I do.
Could you state your name and spell your last name, please?
Yes, my name is Dez, D-E-S, last name Roberts, R-A-B-E-R-T-S.
First name is De, De, D-E-S?
D is in David, E is in Edward, S is in Sam, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Dez, would you provide the board with the benefit of your experience with Take Five, please?
Yes, I'm one of the founding partners, I am a board member, owner, and have been, been with the company since 2018. We operate as Quick Lube of the Carolinas. We are franchisees for Take Five under Driven Brands, they're the franchisor. We currently have 43 units over, I guess really 10 states now.
Thank you, thank you for being here.
Yes, sir.
Before we get into the, this building, what is Take Five? Could you describe the use and what you guys do for the board, please?
Absolutely, so we're very different than most of your other lubrication, lubricant operations. We are a, we're a customer service-based prototype and concept. We, you do not get out of your car. All of our customers stay in their car, we don't have a public bathroom, we do not allow our customers to get out of cars. When you, when you arrive onsite, we have a technician that will actually meet you in the drive-out and direct you into queue, which is important to keep our queue and our, our traffic flowing, you know, steady and consistently. We do, we just do oil changes, all of your, all of your fluids, windshield wipers, coolant, and then we will change your filters. So we are a customer service-based, convenience-based concept and model.
Are there any other Take Fives in New Jersey, Dez?
We do not have one in New Jersey yet, unfortunately. We are, we've just begun construction in Midland Park on Godwin Avenue there on 119 Godwin, so that will be our first open store in New Jersey and then hopefully we'll have the opportunity to open in North Brunswick next.
Where, where are you centrally located? I know you're just parting in New Jersey, but where are you?
Yeah, we're based out of the Carolinas. We have, in North Carolina, we have the Raleigh, Durham, Greensboro, High Point, Winston Market, all the way up through the central swath of North Carolina to Virginia.
How many, how many stores in that area would you, are operational?
We have 43 stores open currently, and I've got four under construction, of which three will open before the end of the year.
How will this Take Five be staffed and managed?
So we, we average 10 to 12 employees per store. Our shifts are four to six employees, six would be a very, very busy store and/or we may have a trainer onsite or potentially the district manager there, you know, doing his, his audits and, and kind of rounds. And, yeah, that's pretty, pretty simple.
What are the hours of operation proposed for this store?
We are seven days a week from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. We do have certain markets, we give our DMs discretion to, you know, close at 6:00 on Sundays or, you know, to cut, you know, New Year's Day to a half day. We do give them some discretion in that, in that regard. A lot of people like overtime, though.
You heard the testimony, there was a lot of questions and testimony about how Wawa is going to have their merchandise, food, et cetera, gas delivered. Would you describe for the board that you're going to have your oil delivered and your other merchandise delivered, please?
Absolutely, we, for supplies, we will, this is obviously vendor and distributor dependent, but we pretty much mandate that our, all of our deliveries come in box trucks, really 14-foot box trucks. And, you know, we get, we'll get product, you know, probably two times a week. If we had a really, really busy store, it will be three times a week. For oil, we, for normal oil, we have, you know, we do have quartz, but we also have what we call rhino, rhino molded tanks. So we have, what's very different, we believe that our prototype and concept is the most environmentally forward-thinking prototype in the marketplace. We do not have floor drains throughout the entire building. So there is no, there's no potential or opportunity for oil to leak or, you know, seep through. We have, we have oil drain pans that we place in our coffin boxes and our pits, which are completely, again, encapsulated into the floor. And we will store the oil, whatever overflow oil we have there, we'll store in those, those drip pans and we will use a 3/4-inch vacuum pump to put that in our recycled oil containers. All of the oil that we use are, is recycled and we use an OSHA-certified vendor who will dispose of that oil. We, we actually are able to sell it. It depends on market, but we do, we are very, you know, prideful that we are, you know, recycling every bit of oil that we, that we utilize.
How is that, how is that recycled oil, how does that leave the premises? How is that-
We have, there's, it's a, it's a similar, it's about a 14-foot pump truck. It's got, you've probably seen, it's just a, you know, a cylinder on the back of the truck, but it's not an 18-wheeler or anything like that, like, like, it's probably similar to what you'd see street cleaners with the, you know, with the little cylinder, but nothing like an old tanker. We, again, we have no 18-wheelers.
Like a home heating oil truck? Same thing you'd deliver home heating oil in, a truck of that size?
Sorry, I'm sorry.
The same thing you would deliver home heating oil in, a truck of that size?
Yes. Yes, yeah. So again, probably a 14-foot, yes, yeah.
And then as far as removing, you said you had deliveries two, two times a week, maybe max three times?
Yeah.
That's coming in, but leaving out the oil, I mean, is this every, it's the same thing?
Two times a week.
Two times a week. And is this, is this product, when you go and you change the oil, is that stored within the facility?
Yes.
Or is it stored outside?
It's stored in the facility, but not underground at all. Again, we store that, we have what we call their Rhino molded tanks, it's a very thick plastic, that we, we hang those on the walls, actually.
And then how, and so when the truck comes to, to pick up the oil?
The old oil. So we have containers as well on, on one side of the shop that we pump the used oil into, and they will bring this pump box truck with the cylinder, like I was telling you, they'll bring it up, and under this case, probably pull. Yeah, so you'll see where the, there's a big parking field where the, where the storm vault is, they will probably, in this case, be able to, to back up or pull straight in, into that area and allow, just across that planning strip, we'll be able to run there.
So is there a connection outside the facility on the?
No, they, they connect them directly to our recycled oil containers.
And, and those, I'm sorry, are those oil containers, they're inside the building?
Correct, they're mounted on the walls.
So then, the hose comes through the wall or through a door?
The hose will, so from our pits here, we have, that we'll hook them up and we'll pump whatever we have out into those oil, into the used oil tanks, we'll then, and we'll do that every day, you know, or twice a day. Then we remove the hose and just continue operating.
Okay.
If that makes sense. And we, usually, we do that after hours, we'll do that, you know, when we're closing, usually.
Okay.
Well, are you, is the question, though, how does the oil get from inside the building into the truck that's evening up?
Correct, yes. So the truck has an actual hose.
Is it, but, like, I'm just trying to envision it, you're saying that these, these containers are hanging up on walls?
Correct, yeah.
And the hose, does the hose then come into the building?
Correct.
Okay, so that?
And it's got, it's got a sealed connection. Again, all these, all these recycled distributors and oil guys are OSHA-certified, the regulations require.
If, if it's coming in the build, is there some sort of access that they're coming?
Yeah, so they'll, they can, the hoses are long, so they can bring them through the bays, through the front of the bays, or they can run them through, we have, in this particular case, we have a site plan. Just the, the overall site plan. Yeah, this'll work, right here. So in this case, you see, you could either bring it, you could, you know, they probably back up through here, and you can bring it here, or we could, depending, depending on the prototype in the actual store, you can bring it in through here sometimes. This is where an office area is, where we, and we store our, our product, our filters and windshield wipers.
And is that, is that during the day, or is that after hours?
It's, we usually try to do that at, at non-peak time, so ideally, they come at 7:00 a.m.
7:00 a.m., okay.
Unfortunately, we're not always in, in absolute control of that, but we try to get it at 7:00 or 7:30 at night, to, you know, just to.
And they're two separate, do you have a delivery?
Correct.
For the fresh oil?
Correct.
And then you have the delivery, I mean, pickup for the used oil?
Yes, ma'am, and they're, they're two separate vendors.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
Yeah.
And I know it's kind of a complicated process, but again, we've, you know, Driven Brands is, is the franchisor, and, you know, they have just over 800 units now, and this has been kind of one of the, the fundamental, you know, focal points of these new prototypes, to make sure that we are more environmentally conscious, you know, and we recycle all of, or we really, they put a lot of time and effort in, you know, in, in making sure that we are, you know, best practices and, and really being ahead of, of everybody else and what, you know, what the requirements and standards are.
And, and it's, is there, like, a, do you all have a set time, like, say, if I'm in one car?
There are no appointments.
And then there's another, another car's behind me, and they come in, okay, you're gonna get them in and out within?
Our average turn time is 12 minutes.
Oh.
Yeah, and the other piece, I will, I will tell you, we do not, I mean, we'll do pickup trucks, we don't do any, we don't do any fleet work onsite, and we don't, we'll do a van, you know, but we're not gonna do, you know, we're not gonna do one of the box trucks or anything that's, you know, any, certainly not any commercial-type vehicle. But, I mean, we'll still do a Ford 350 or a big truck, but that's pretty much the limits.
You said somebody had 800 stores, 800, who were you talking about?
So Driven Brands, they're the franchisor, and amongst the system with corporate stores and franchisee stores, there's over 800 units throughout the United States.
Okay, so, so you're the franchisee of 45 stores from the 800 they have?
Correct.
So they have 800 stores, and you've got 40, 45 of them?
43 currently open and operating, yes, sir.
And you said all, all the oils recycled, I'm just, what do they do with recycled oil?
They do, they, to be honest, I think there are several different, different things they do with it, but I don't, I'm not an expert in that field, so I don't wanna, I don't wanna tell you something that is, that one distributor does, the other one doesn't. But they are able to recycle it. Now, what they recycle it into, maybe other lubricants, I'm not exactly sure, but.
12 minutes, wow. Dez, while, while the board, I think, contemplates a few, Mr. Watson, you have another question?
Yeah, so most of your deliveries, you see them, like, parking in the lot?
So under this, especially this, this, we have a lot of parking here.
Yeah.
And what I would envision here is our loading to occur here, especially with our, with our, you know, our filters and windshield wipers, they'll be able to do a, use a hand truck, those guys only use hand trucks, so they'll be able to roll in here in our storage room here.
Okay, so, that's interesting, so for the most part, the people that are gonna utilize your store are not going to have to park, per se?
They're not permitted, they're not permitted to park.
So the, the 20 parking spaces for your use is probably overparked, and it's gonna be for employees?
Correct.
Et cetera, okay.
Yeah, we, and it depends on the markets, we, we really have, we try to incentivize and encourage our employees to carpool, that is, in certain areas, obviously, that's, you know, more difficult than not, but we, we do try to give gift cards and try to incentivize our employees to do, to ride together if at all possible.
In this case, it'll probably be Wawa gift carts.
That's right, we can do that, yeah.
How many bays?
Three.
Three?
Three, yes, sir.
Okay.
So to give you some kind of idea here, can everybody see? So we'll have three bays here, at P, at our highest volume store, you know, well, our highest volume store probably does 80 cars a day, and at that store, our peak, we won't do more than 10 cars in an hour. I mean, 12 would be crazy. So we'll have three cars in bay here, we'll be able to stack three here, three here, and then we'll have, we'll be able to stack probably another three here, which will be 12 cars, and we will, you know, we'll be in great shape if that were to happen, but we don't have that happen in any of our other stores. And again, our techs will, will pull you into queue, I mean, they'll greet you when you come in and direct you, which is surprisingly a really big deal. It helps the flow of traffic, and it's, you know, something that we require for all our, our technicians, we have one tech who does that.
Our majority of your clients, are they appointment-only?
We don't do appointments.
You don't do appointments?
No appointments at all.
Is it just, is it just one type of oil?
No, we have, yeah, we have, we have, yeah, we have Duramax, we have, we offer a number of oils, we offer synthetics.
Okay.
Yeah, we have, we have a number of, and obviously, for, you know, bigger SUVs, there's, you know, a different kind of caliber of oil for that, but yes. We very much pride ourselves, though, on keeping customer records, obviously, you have your, you know, your VIN number in your door, and we keep record of your oil, so ideally, if we retain you as a customer, you know, you roll in and see Jeff there, and he's like, you know, hello, do you want the same, you know, do you want the same, or the mobile one synthetic that you've gotten last time? And it's, the retention is, is for speed.
And I'm assuming that for, like, hazardous materials and all, ocean, all that?
Absolutely, we fire all, we'll follow all state, local, and OSHA requirements. And again, that's something we, we try to go above and beyond in that, that regard.
And then it's, it's just, sorry.
No, you're fine.
And it's, in terms of, like, for, I don't wanna say, like, life safety, but for fire?
Yes.
Anything should happen, I mean, do you all have special equipment that you store?
We just have normal fire, fire suppression that was required by, by state and local code, but, you know, one thing that we, we do, we just opened a store in, in North Philadelphia, and we actually, after inspection, we had the fire marshal come over, he was kind enough to kind of come over, and we showed him the facilities again, and just, you know, made sure that he was comfortable and confident with what we have in place, and so, yeah, we.
You do have fire?
Yeah.
Okay.
How'd you identify North Brunswick? Prime location?
Traffic, traffic, it's at a dominant intersection, and to be honest, with Wawa as a co-tenant, it is, it is great for us. It is, you know, they generate so many visits, and especially for us being new to the New Jersey market, having that exposure, you know, you probably go to Wawa, you know, a pretty good bit, so having that exposure and, and giving some more brand recognition is something we really are excited about, and hopefully, we'll be able to partner with Wawa on deals going forward. The other thing I'll say about our use, it is, we're really small. I mean, I can pretty much subscribe to .3 acres, whereas, you know, even Starbucks can't do that, so we're able to kind of come in in some, some urban areas and kind of clean up a corner that nobody else could really do, that's, especially these old service stations, like the old Getty service stations that, you know, are so inundated, if that's an answer to your question. Thank you.
Dez, briefly, would you just mind, because there was some questions in Mr. Watson's report, could you discuss briefly the, the architectural rendering that was?
Yeah, correct.
Submitted as part of the application?
Yeah, we have, we do all EPAS, we have our, and, you know, one thing I'll say, with these, this prototype is, is, is set by corporate, and we implement this, or they implement that kind of across the country. So we have kind of red and yellow accents here, all EPAS, and then we have some beige, beige accent here below, this is kind of our primary, one of our branding features of our building, this kind of parapet tower. We do have some metal in that area, but outside of that, it's a pretty simple concept. We do not have mechanical, we put, we'll have, we'll have heaters, we'll have heaters in the roof, gas heaters, but, and we have really big fans, but we don't, long and short, we will not have any mechanical on the roof that will be exposed or seen. We have these huge fans.
No AC.
And honestly, it, we thought about doing it, but because the doors are always open, it doesn't even, it doesn't even work, but we have these massive fans, and I can tell you, in the Carolinas, it gets hot, so we make sure to, we make sure to, you know, we'll have probably six of those big fans in some of our, in some of our stores, so.
Thank you, Dez. Mr. Chairman, no further questions for this question? One witness briefly, the traffic engineer will come up and?
Thank you so much for your time, I appreciate it. Look forward to, look forward to the opportunity.
Good evening. My name's Kery Pankey, K-E-R-R-Y-P-E-H-N-K-E.
Wait, he wasn't ready.
Could you stand up, please?
Yeah.
With regard to this application, do you swear the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth?
I do.
And your name, if you could just state it again, I know it, but state it again for the record.
Kery Pankey, K-E-R-R-Y-P-E-H-N-K-E.
Thank you.
Kery, briefly, would you state your qualifications and professional, both professional and education as a traffic engineer of the state of New Jersey, please?
Of course, I'm a senior project engineer at Langin Engineering, I have a bachelor of science in civil engineering from Rowan University, I'm a registered professional engineer in the state of New Jersey, where I've been practicing for over 12 years now with an expertise in traffic, and I've previously testified and qualified before boards in New Jersey, including this one.
Great, thank you, we'll accept you as the next one.
In fact, what board did you appear as your first testimony as a licensed traffic engineer of the state?
Yes, seven years ago, I had the pleasure of coming here for my first time, so, yeah. Now I'm back.
We've submitted, as part of this application, a traffic impact report, would you mind summarizing that and going through the, the trip generations and the site circulation proposed for this development?
Yeah, of course, I'm gonna go through the traffic study tonight, as well as discuss a little bit of the history, not just of the site, but of the area itself, and with the efforts with DOT for well over, probably two decades now, that they've been back and forth. So we prepared the traffic study, which you have in front of you, it's dated July 16th, 2025, includes the proposed Wawa and Take Five, as well as the prior approval for Amarin Phase 2, which is the 90 additional senior housing units. The study has been prepared consistent with industry standards and methodologies, we conducted recent turning movement traffic counts to establish existing and representative traffic patterns in the area at the study intersections that we include in that study. We also included trip generation projections associated with the proposed development, since it's along a state highway, we did that consistent with NJDOT required standards, which is the governing jurisdiction, as well as nationally recognized data from Institute of Transportation Engineers, which is commonly referred to as ITE, from their most recent publication at the time that we prepared the traffic study. As part of the study, we evaluated the driveway system connections to the adjacent railway networks, including reference Renaissance Boulevard and US Route 130. The site is located along that US 130 southbound, currently constructed on the site is a daycare, a pharmacy, and 222 age-restricted units, which is located on that south side of the property. The overall development property was actually previously permitted with DOT and approved by DOT for actually 213,000 square feet of retail space. That's a large commercial development, and it included the driveway systems that exist today, which were constructed and designed to handle those higher levels of traffic that we normally see associated with a shopping center. The applicant has constructed all those site driveways, including the two right-in, right-out driveways, and that right-in, enter-only driveway on US 130, including alternative access to both Renaissance Boulevard West and Renaissance Boulevard North, and that north one allows access to the traffic signal. So there's five driveways total, three on the state highway, two alternative access that can be used to access the site. Additionally, the applicant and developers of the area, of the Renaissance area as a whole, inclusive of the Amarin site, were constructed under prior DOT permit approvals, the third Route 130 southbound lane, that's actually along that frontage, the Amarin site. They also constructed that existing traffic signal on Renaissance Boulevard North and the Apple Orchard Lane, which has the double left turn lanes northbound, that jug handle system, all that's been constructed with the idea of this development of this Renaissance area as a major commercial property and shopping center destination. In 2018, this developer had to go back to DOT because the lots were subdivided into two lots, so DOT had to issue a new permit for that subdivision. As part of this current application now with the site, which now includes Wawa, Take Five, and those additional age-restricted units, now that combined with what's already on the site, creates this overall development parcel. Over the, overall, this project is gonna generate less traffic than was originally designed and permitted by DOT for that 213,000 square feet back in 2000. and permitted by DOT for that 213,000 square feet back in 2011. The residential uses, as well as the Take Five, are what we consider lower traffic generators. And while, you know, Wawa has a lot of high activity at the site driveways, they actually estimate about 75% of their traffic is captured from an existing travel stream. So what we use term-wise in traffic engineering is pass-by traffic. So they already exist on the roadway. So someone going to work or dropping their kid off at school, they're capturing the existing traffic, bringing it in, and then you're going on the same route home. So the actual new traffic that Wawa is adding to the system is a lot less than what that retail development, the shopping center would have that was originally permitted for the site. The access for the overall development is going to be continued to be provided with what's out there now and what's been constructed, with the alternative access maintained. And that now internal road will completely connect from Renaissance Boulevard West to Renaissance Boulevard North. That Town Center Drive that we're referring to, that internal connection now that's being completed, is designed in accordance with best practices with the NJ DOT Access Code to tie together the different properties of the site and connect the developments to not just their right and right access, but the signalized access that allows movements to go back to Route 1 North we're coming from, Route 1 North into the site. The driveways have all been designed to accommodate the project traffic and will continue to operate at good levels of service. We're not proposing any changes to the driveways on the state highway or the alternative access driveways. We did have a pre-application meeting with NJ DOT already, as there is going to be additional subdivisions on the site going from the now existing two lots to five lots are proposed. This triggers the need to get a new subdivision application with the DOT. As part of that meeting, different divisions from DOT were on there. And one of them was the Traffic Engineering Division. And they indicated that further review of the application as part of their division is most likely not needed, as their review of the prior constructed improvements and the driveway system connections, they felt that the capacity is out there and exists and was constructed for a more intense use, back to what they permitted in 2011. I do want to note that when we do receive that new subdivision permit, we will be able to provide that to the township. The circulation, I just want to go a little bit into that because I know there were some questions brought up about that. So the site circulation, talking about Wawa first, meets Wawa design standards. The design incorporates the best practices for safe environmental conditions established to the Wawa standards. The layout is really typical of any other Wawa you see, or really any convenience store with gas that you might have come across or, or, or used yourself. The plan, as has been discussed, incorporates those four oversized parking spaces, which are going to accommodate those larger landscape vehicles. I know I come across them at Wawa, so great situation to be able to get them into a space, as well as any box trucks that are filling up there and they want to go inside. I want to talk a little bit about the fly-through window. I know it was brought up that there's two lanes there. So that outer lane is what we normally would refer to as like a bypass lane. So it allows people to, to go by anyone that may be waiting at the window if they decide to circulate the building that way. And just to reiterate, you know, you have to use the app to order from there, and it's a pickup window. It's not, there's no order board, so it's not like any like drive-through, like a Wendy's or a Chick-fil-A, like it's not that kind of situation at all. So we anticipate minimal traffic and wouldn't impact any other circulation on the site. So overall, for Wawa, the circulation system can accommodate the different types of vehicles, the oil tanker, box truck deliveries, and passenger vehicles to move through the site freely and, and around the vehicle to the, around the building to the different driveways. Similarly, the Take Five site layout is designed for its specific operation. The parking lot is separate from the service bays, and the circulation is pretty straightforward over there and pretty intuitive for customers. So we don't foresee any issues with the circulation on that side. Unless there's any questions, that kind of ends my direct testimony.
You had a, you had a chance to review Mr. Watson's November 4th, 2025 report?
I did, yes.
To the extent there are any comments related to traffic, your traffic report, et cetera, you could comply with those, or we could comply with those comments?
Yes.
And in sum, the uses we're proposing can operate safely and efficiently as proposed?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Watson?
That sounds good. I just wanted to clarify one thing. So the, the actual permit that you need from NJ DOT is because of the subdivision. They're not really looking for any additional changes to access. It's, it's more of an administrative issue.
That's correct. So we're going in for the subdivision application. There's nothing we're changing on the state highway. There's nothing we're changing within their right-of-way. We're not changing the alternative access. So all that's staying the same. So it essentially is administrative, but.
Yeah. And through your pre-application meeting, they led you to believe that they wouldn't need further traffic review? That was also?
Correct. They had no concerns at the time.
Okay.
When were the, were the driveways, were the driveways constructed as the two existing, driveways shown on the plan, they're actually there now? And they were built, you utilized them just the way they are?
Correct. Yep. Oh, there's actually three. So there's a right-in up by the pharmacy. That's constructed to completion. There's a right-in, right-out that kind of goes to nowhere right now. And then a right-in, right-out that goes to that 222 senior housing. So all that work has been completed.
Guys were clairvoyant, knowing exactly where you needed your driveways for the future buildings.
And, and Mr. Vigna, I mean, that's what the plan shows, that the proposed work starts at the DOT right-of-way and moves on to the site. It does not go into the DOT right-of-way.
Okay. The, I'm just curious, the logical way, for somebody going to the Wawa, because most of the parking spaces are over that way, you don't know. Is, is the logical thing for them to entrance, enter that one way in or to go in the main, go in the other entrance? I guess you would, you would turn in that first entrance, because if you turn in the second entrance, you have to make a sharp right-hand turn. I mean, just logically speaking, would most of the people be coming in that first entrance?
Most likely, yes. That's what we estimated.
And then, so they, when you come in those, that first entrance is what, there's eight, eight parking spaces up along the front on Route 130? But there's no problem, no problem pulling, you're pulling in that entrance and you want to make that left-hand, then you want to make a left-hand turn. There's those eight parking spaces up front. I'm looking at that very first parking, parking space, the one closest to the pylon sign. If somebody's backing out there, you know, is, is that space too close? Does that cause a potential problem? You see the 90-degree angle parking space, closest to the pylon sign by the first entrance? If somebody's backing out there and cars are coming in, they want to make a left-hand, they want to, they come in and make a left-hand turn to pull right, to pull right through the, the, the gas pumps, I'm just thinking maybe that first space shouldn't be there. See what I'm talking about, Jim? It's, it's right where the arrow points. It says make ready, EV parking stall. If, if I was coming in to get gas from Wawa, I'd turn in that, I'd turn in that one-way entrance. I'd make an immediate left and try and pull through that way. I wouldn't loop, I wouldn't normally loop around. I'm just thinking maybe that first space ought to disappear and.
Could you show us that, that a turning path for a passenger car can access that space?
I think we could agree to that, yeah.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what the.
We're just questioning the access, coming in the first driveway and then turning left. We just want to demonstrate that we can access that space.
And you've got those six parking spaces there. That first space to me looks hard to get into. And as you're backing out to get out of it, it's making me think you could block off the aisle there. I'm just, you know.
We could show that movement to check. It's not an atypical design. There are plenty of Wawas that have parking that is along the roadway, but that's an easy check to do. We can provide that template.
I'm sorry, it's easy enough to what?
It's an easy check to do, so we can provide that turning template for a passenger car.
And the distance from that space, that the edge of the curb to the driveway, what do we have there? We have like 20 to 30 feet, I think, right? Because Tom's thinking about a vehicle that's backing out of that first space.
So it is, it is a two-way aisle there too, so they have the area behind them.
That way as well.
And there is that buffer still. I don't, I don't know the exact dimension of that buffered area. But I, I do expect that they'll be able to maneuver.
Okay, we can, we can review it, work with you.
Will, will all of the delivery trucks be required to exit onto Route 130? Or will they have access to Town Center Drive?
There's no truck restrictions on Renaissance, so they'd be able to access the site from any entrance.
So for Town Center or 130?
Correct.
Okay.
I, I have a question about the intersection. If I'm traveling northbound on Route 130 and I want, and I see, oh, okay, there's Wawa. Now I'm at the light there. Is there, I'm familiar with it. I'm not, I guess I'm not envisioning it right now. Is there a, like a no U-turn sign there? Are we going to be having people making, you know, that U-turn there to try to get into the Wawa as opposed to going down Renaissance and in the back towards Town Center? So.
I have to, I'm not sure if there's no U-turn, but I mean, there is the double left turn lane, and it's a pretty quick in, so.
But you understand what I'm saying, right? Because we have the same situation on Adams, on Adams Lane, where people, instead of making a left, they're doing the U-turn. Then you go back around, you get to.
I think you're, I think you're permitted to make a U-turn at that light. I think that's a permitted turn movement there.
You probably not because it's a double left, so I would imagine if, like to design standards, it would restrict it.
I mean, I'm through that intersection every morning. I'm not northbound. I'm going, I'm going in the other direction. And with, there's a lot of 18-wheelers that just blow right through, I'll tell you, they blow right through that light every morning. When I'm coming up Renaissance Boulevard to cross over 130, I have to, I can't like, I mean, I know that doesn't have anything to do with this, but I'm just saying it's not like, you know, just a calm intersection there.
She's worried about, no, no, no.
I just envision a lot of people doing that.
Coming northbound on Route 1, are cars going to make U-turns to try and?
With the double left, I would be surprised if it was legal, because having the two left turn lanes.
It's a state, we could, we could probably check if someone does a Google or a side view, but it's a, it's a state highway, so I don't know.
There is a no U-turn sign in the median, and I believe there is.
On the northbound side.
It says, left on, left on green arrow only.
Come to back door, yeah.
Yeah, there's, there's a sign.
There's a sign, yeah.
There is.
There's a symbol.
Which would be consistent with design for a double left turn lane.
So they would have to go Renaissance Boulevard and come in Town Center Drive.
Any other questions?
What is the, what's the daily traffic volume on 130? I know you did count. You just, off the top of your head or just quick? I'm just curious, you know, we hear so much about daily traffic. What the?
62.
You guessing 62,000 cars a day? Our chairman guessed 62,000 cars a day.
Uh, so it'd be about 15 to 1600 cars southbound.
That's in the peak period.
Passing site.
That's in the peak period, you're saying?
That's during the peak period, so.
I'm just wondering what the, you know, daily, you know, daily traffic is on Route 130.
Yeah, like 1600 cars is what you see during a, in the time.
During the peak period.
For a day and.
I was just curious what it was over the course of a day.
You could account for, that'd be about 10% mostly of the traffic. Peak hour traffic is usually about 10% of the 24-hour.
Oh, so that, that would make it less than 20,000 cars a day then?
Yeah.
I'm shocked. Traffic is so bad there. I thought it would, would have been a lot higher.
Get rid of the lights. Any other questions?
Nothing further for this witness, Mr. Chairman. You're good? Ready to open it to the public, Mr. Chairman.
So first, let's have a motion to open the meeting to the public.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is there anyone in the public who would like to be heard? Yes, sir.
Hi, Jonathan Flanders with the Environmental Commission.
Thank you for being here.
And.
I said thank you for coming.
Oh, thank you. So I just want to give my wish list for environmental concerns.
Swear amen.
A couple of things I, I do like that you're doing the porous pavement. And that you're going to have the EV charger infrastructure. Couple more things I'd like is the trees. I see that you have a lot of trees in the plan. If you could put in larger trees. There was, where Amarinth was put in, in the proposed location for Wawa, there was a forest there before. With Amarinth now, it really is a heat sink, just with all the pavement and buildings. So I would like to see as much large, over-story trees as possible. I also understand that a lot of your Wawas do have solar panels. I would encourage you to put in solar panels on the overhangs, over the gas stations and on the buildings. Do you want me to address?
Sure. Just wondering, you have solar panels?
Yeah, so just like with the EV, we're not in the solar panel business, but New Jersey has some generous credits, as you know. And we have a third-party partner that has put solar panels on over 100 of our canopies in New Jersey. I, like, we're not going to put the panels on, but we will certainly offer this to them and, and ask that they do.
Okay.
But it's a financial decision on their part. But the fact that they've done it on 100 of our stores in New Jersey and counting, I would be encouraged that they will.
Okay, good to hear. I did provide with our comments some recommendations on the bioretention basins. If they could be.
Not him. Anybody who speaks.
Anyone else, anyone else?
Anybody else, yeah.
Just give it to Mike if he needs it.
Oh, okay, got it.
Yeah, yeah.
If they could be as wildlife-friendly as possible. I know some of the older basins in town are cement structures with steep sides. If they could be more of a gradual slope and have some more New Jersey native plants that would encourage wildlife, that would be preferred. I would prefer no drive-through if possible, just because it's an idling thing in New Jersey. And with regard to drive-throughs, it would be good if you could have some signage about the idling rules in New Jersey, which is three minutes. So.
Mike, you got to grab the mic. There we go.
Yeah, so definitely not a drive-through, so I want to just make that clear again. Mobile order pickup, our average pickup time is 30 seconds. So the idling of three minutes is not going to come into play. But the signage, we do have signage on our store that says no idling, you know, in accordance with New Jersey statute. But we can make sure that there is one on the, on the side with the fly-through window.
Okay. And yeah, just people do park in their cars too. I mean, it's not just going through.
Yeah, that's why we do have the signage anyway.
And deliveries too, I guess for that matter.
Yes, correct.
Okay. Hours, I know you're 24/7. I would prefer less just because of the light pollution. I know there are residents nearby. That's just a wish.
I didn't understand that. I'm sorry.
The light pollution, I don't know how far.
He asked if we could be open less than 24 hours, and that's, that's a part of our brand inconvenience, so.
I got it.
I appreciate the request, though.
Litter control with a lot of fast food places, Wawa included. I pick up garbage in my neighborhood, but McDonald's, whatever. But on property, I'm hoping that they can do a daily cleanup there on, on site.
So I reached out to the general managers of our two stores in North Brunswick, and, and they confirmed that they do a pickup around the site once per shift. And there's three shifts a day. I don't, I can't promise the overnight one happens every time, but, but at least once a day, up to three times a day, we, we police the parking lot.
Okay. Another thing, the. Another thing, the trash recycling in the back, I'm hoping they can have tight controls on the recycling. I think in New Jersey, a lot of recycling is kind of pretend recycling. There's plastic bags mixed in with the recyclables, there's mixed materials, sometimes you can't decipher the difference between what's garbage and what's recycling. So I'm hoping, in fact, I see a lot of trucks just pick up both containers at the same time because...
We'll, we'll definitely contract with normal refuse pickup and recycling pickup and most of our recycling is cardboard.
Right.
So that's...
I would probably just restrict it to just cardboard because otherwise it's a mess.
Right.
Yeah. And last thing, with regard to take five, you mentioned that the person stays in the car.
Does.
And I just wonder, safety-wise, whether you ever had problems with somebody starting up the car when somebody's working on the vehicle?
You leave your car on until you pull into the bay and a technician will advise you to cut your car off.
Okay.
So we have, we have a tenant's right to ensure that.
No problem.
I'm happy, happy to answer anything you've got.
All right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the public who'd like to be heard? Motion to close the public?
So moved.
All in favor?
Bye.
Close. I have a question. Is there a, is there, is there, you've got, is there a protocol or standard operating procedures for, I don't know what politically correct term to use, but like less desirables who are sitting on the, uh, picnic tables out front or hanging around the area, maybe scaring residents, scaring customers or so forth. And I'm not saying it's Wawa, but I've seen it at Quick Check.
Yeah, Quick Check.
I would need to notify the police, does the manager notify the police?
I've sat, I've sat outside of Quick Checks.
You know what I'm talking about. Someone sitting out there asking for money or something, I'm not, listen.
Yeah, so we discourage panhandling. We would ask that, we would ask, typically, we'd ask someone to move on if they're, if they're loitering too long. We have signs on the building that say no loitering and, you know, we, for safety reasons, we ask that our, our employees not go to great lengths to remove someone, so we would call the police if it's an, if it's like an ongoing problem.
What about at 8 o'clock at night when there's three carloads and just some high school kids hanging out and stuff like that? As long as they're quiet and they're not bothering anybody, you know, they're, if they're hanging out at 11 o'clock at night, you, I'm sure you'd shush them away because there's houses.
Yeah, if there are complaints, we hope they come in the store at least a couple times while they're hanging out. But seriously, that, it's not usually a problem. It might be like an off thing at most stores, but yeah, same thing. If, if we get complaints, if someone's disturbed by the noise, then we'll act on it. If that doesn't resolve it, you know, asking either whoever it is to be quiet or to move on, then, you know, we would, we would call the police. I, I don't think we're going to have that problem at this location.
Probably not.
But we do have procedures to address it.
Great, thank you.
Certainly.
Any other questions? Any discussion?
I, I just have a question. It may have been mentioned, I just, typically, Wawa has, I guess they have, they're called, are they called like ballisters for when you park, like, or park in the lawn?
Bollards.
What are they called?
Bollards.
Bollards, yeah.
Close.
Sorry, that's what I said. Is that the prototype for this building as well?
Yes, so many years ago, we went to a no curb reveal around the building, so we just had too many trip and falls. People would come out of the store, they're opening their package or their hoagie, they can't wait till they get to their car and, and fall off and trip. So now the, the curb, the sidewalk is at the same elevation as the, the parking spaces. So the bollards are a safety feature that, that keep cars from, you know, running into where the pedestrians are.
Will this store actually have, uh, the curbs, well, Pollard Side Delivery or is that a COVID thing and that's out? Some of the stores still have 10 spots.
Yes.
That is our first...
Yeah, like every spot, like, oh, I'm in spot 64, like...
Yeah, yeah.
No, mobile order pickup does away with curb side pickup, so it replaces that.
Are you removing those signs from your other Wawa stores?
As, if we add mobile order pickup, we, we'll remove this.
It's amazing how people don't want to park in those spots like they think they're going to get them.
Yeah, it's...
Anyway, does anyone else have any?
Yeah, you didn't answer my question about when you start serving gobblers. I'm teasing, I'm teasing. You operate every store in New Jersey, I was just...
I'm at the mercy of the marketing department, just like the rest of you.
Yeah, when do they start and when do they stop?
Started already.
I know, it started, yeah.
After Thanksgiving.
Oh, you just want to know the dates.
Does it end right after Thanksgiving is the question? I'm teasing, go on.
I, the best thing you could do is go every day.
That's a, that's a prob, uh, don't say that.
I, I just have a...
Don't say, don't say that.
I don't want to show you the customer card.
I just have a question, I mean, a technical question, but as far as the...
I passed three Wawas on my way home.
As far as the equipment that you have that's running the store, is that, that's located on top of the roof?
Yeah, we have a, a parapet, a parapet around that, that blocks the, the view from street level, so it is all on the roof.
Is it, is, have there ever been any issue in terms of noise from that equipment that just...
No, we, we, we're kind of high-end and buy the, and use the equipment that, that's pretty good and doesn't have a lot of noise issues. And the parapet also blocks the noise.
Okay. And then you had, just to clarify, you had mentioned about, or maybe I, I saw it in here, is there any type of green roof or solar panels or anything such?
No, we, the Environmental Commission representative did ask about solar panels and we, we may put those on the canopy.
Okay. Canopy meaning the, where the...
The, the fuel canopy.
Passes?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
So it's this area here.
Okay.
We will, we'll talk to our third party and, and ask if they'll engage here.
Okay. Yeah.
Well, there's no vanation, I believe a motion is in order.
You want, you want Lou to go over potential conditions that we discussed?
Sure, where there are any.
Okay, we have our, we have our garden variety conditions that we put in all resolutions. On this one, I have that the applicant agreed to comply with Jim's conditions in his reports. I bet they're going to better delineate, delineate or mark the four oversized parking spaces on the plans. In, in the event the board approves this, the buildings, the structures on site will be as shown on the exhibits in terms of color, materials, quality. I have, I have either no parking signage or no idling signage on the side of the building with the drive-through. Does the board have a preference or...
On the side by the drive-through in response to the Environmental Commission, a no, a no idling sign.
No idling?
No idling sign, yeah.
Okay, no idling sign. We talked about stop bars on the plans, I'm not, and, and marking crosswalk areas, I'm not exactly sure where on the plans they would be.
That's go, going across, going across where you have your flyby, is that what you call it?
Correct.
There'd be additional stop bar and stop sign so that, that people who are parked in those parking spaces don't have to worry about the car just coming through.
All right, so on, so that would be on the, where on the...
On the southern side of the building, is that, on the southern, across the, the fly, what'd you call it, flyway?
Fly through.
Fly through driveway.
And it's, it's already been marked up on the plan.
Okay, fly through. Right.
And we're going to verify...
No tractor trailer parking by the entrance to, to the building?
Signage at all.
Could you, could, I just, I'd ask whether you could post a no tractor...
Trailer parking.
Trailer parking on site, that type of sign, so trucks don't pull in.
At the entrance, at the right end.
At the entrance.
At entrance, no idling, and I think you wanted a condition that...
Something about...
Turkey gobbler sandwiches all year.
Oh, yeah, yeah, so that was the other thing. Would you object to a condition that you have to serve the gobbler at least six months a year?
I object.
Now, that's a problem?
Mr. Vigna, I'm sorry, I don't think we can agree to that condition.
All right, okay.
This could be, this could be case law.
I don't know if that's covered.
I don't think...
I don't think that's covered, it'll even just land in law.
The only other thing I was concerned about was access to that first parking space when you, when you pull in and you're, they're going to demonstrate that, that there's access to and from the first space by the one-way entrance so that it would not impede or block or cause a problem with traffic.
First space.
Right, Jim, something like that, wording like that?
One-way entrance, um, that it could be accessed safely or...
Sure, it could be access, you know, access without impeding traffic flow, something like that.
That they would demonstrate that?
Yeah.
Yeah, they can provide us a figure.
Got it, got it. And that, that's, those were the specific conditions for this application. And, or normal, they comply with the plans, et cetera, et cetera.
Hold on, we have another question.
I just have another question, I'm sorry. In terms of the traffic that's on Route 130 as it's going down, there are a lot of tractor trailers that do service that road a lot, trying to bypass the, the, the tolls, and it's increased. Obviously, they're going to possibly stop by here because there's really nothing else on, you know, from coming from Route 1, coming down 130, if, first you're going to stop and you're going to see the Wawa. Is there any thoughts to, anything to do with 18-wheelers?
In the morning, um, so just to give up, in the morning, there, there are quite a few 18-wheel...
Traffic, yes.
Yeah.
No, traffic, sorry.
Yeah, 18-wheelers that are bypassing the, the turnpike at times.
Yes.
Yeah, so there are in the morning, I don't know what it's like in the evening, but...
So one of the con...
Yes. Yeah, and it's, it's increasing more and more, so I don't know if there's any thought to what, you know, if they're, if they do stop there, where do they, you know?
So, uh, we, you know, we've testified that we're not encouraging or accommodating tractor trailers on site other than delivery vehicles and we've, we're putting a condition in the resolution to put a sign at the entrance that says no truck or trailer parking. So, you know, the hope is that that will discourage tractor trailers from coming on site.
So I guess the question would be, because I know what you're talking about now, so like we're Dunkin' Donuts is on the other side, like there's some times where tractors will park and then they'll leave it on Route 130 and go in and grab a cup of coffee and listen, they work hard and they deserve to get a cup of coffee, I'm not by any stretch of imagination saying that, but sometimes where they park, when you go look to the left, you can't see. So that's really not your issue, but I would assume the manager may, if there's one or two, if it's an everyday occurrence, would maybe let the authorities know, hey, keep an eye on this, at 9 o'clock every morning, we get these two trucks there and it could cost us.
Yeah, and I imagine the cops are going up and down this section pretty frequently and they'll, they'll see that.
Is there, there's a full shoulder there, right?
Right, Jim? There is, Tom, I'm looking at it right now.
So, so there is, there is room for, for a tractor trailer to, you know, to just pull over and bark there and walk in?
Oh, is that what shoulders are for?
No. But I think that, I think that's the concern of Marion Subramaniam.
Yeah, yeah, because when you go look and try to exit.
Yeah, well, I don't know, is that something that police can enforce, you know, enforce on it?
I would think that's an enforcement issue, but there is a full shoulder there.
Right.
Thanks, Mike.
And the gobbler wouldn't be special if we had it all year.
And there won't be parking buses there, right? All right, great, uh, Tom, you want to try to put this into a, what, a motion?
Uh, yeah, I, I'd make, I'd make, I'll make a motion that we approve the, the subdivision, Plumerian Minor Final Subdivision application as well as Plumerian Final Site Plan for Take Five and Wawa, subject to, um, uh, the eight or nine conditions that our attorney, Lou Ragoe, just went over.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Zangara?
Yes.
Mr. Melanson?
Yes.
Ms. Hutchinson?
Yes.
Ms. Malbone?
Um, yes, well, I'm not in favor of a third Wawa in North Brunswick, but yes.
Mr. Vigna?
Yes.
Mr. Brooks?
No, she voted yes. I have a major concern about the traffic. And it's primarily due to the proximity of two schools. I mentioned there is a middle school that is one block south of Wawa, one block north of Wawa, and then on Town Center Drive, there is a Light Bridge Academy. And as a result of the amount of traffic, yeah, you will pick up customers from the steady flow, but because of the proximity of the schools, there's going to be, my concern is there's a, there's going to be a major deal of congestion right in that area, which is in close proximity to two schools, and as a result, I'm concerned about the safety of the children in this area, so I'm going to have to vote no.
Is that, are you, is that because of Wawa and Take Five or is that because of the seniors that are looking to live there?
No, it's because of, primarily because of the Wawa and the amount of trucks and traffic that are going to be congested in that area because of the...
Based on Wawa Take Five?
Based on Wawa Take Five and the number of deliveries on a daily basis.
Maybe if, well, maybe you want to put in a 220,000 square foot shopping center. All right.
Mr. Candia?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Brooks, have you ever tried the gobbler?
That is, uh, application for...
Another location, not denying those proximity to school.
Thank you, thank you.
Do we write?
And you know what? Who's the final? The pretzel. Six one.
Oh, they did.
On this, on this resolution...